That's 2023 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance. And also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance? And remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. God, we pray blessings on each school board member here. May we work together for the good of our students, schools, and community. May we be filled with your wisdom, discernment, grace, and guidance. And may we have open minds and hearts to listen to one another and the needs of this school system. And may we lean on you for every decision we make. In your name we pray, amen. Our first order of business tonight is the Agenda Review. Do I have a motion to approve? The agenda is written?
Move to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Board Member Coon, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Our next order of business is our Student Performance. Please join me in welcoming the RJ Reynolds High School Strings with Principal Calvin Freeman. That was wonderful and just really sets the tone for a very good meeting. Our next order of business is our Special Recognitions. First, David Daggett will present the Safe and Sober T-Shirt winner.
Good evening and thank you. We are so excited. This is the 33rd year of the Safe Sober Program. Can you believe that? I was just a child when I started it. It's an exciting evening. And one of the highlights of the Safe Sober Program is the T-Shirt Design Contest. This year, we got many, many entries. They were fabulous entries. And we were so excited when we made a surprise visit to Mr. Mark Underhill's Digital Media Classroom at the Career Center. We had the mayor with us and a lot of dignitaries to surprise a wonderful student who has a soccer game tonight. She also has a soccer game at your next meeting. So we're here. We did pop into Reagan High School, and she was highly embarrassed when we surprised her on Friday at Reagan High School because she couldn't be here. We've done that several times. But we are so proud of these excellent teachers like Mr. Underwood, his students, and the Safe Sober Program, the way it's caught on with our students. Real, real quickly, the purpose of the program is awareness of the dangers of drugs and alcohol, creating an atmosphere that is the most powerful there is, that's positive peer pressure, and to engage support for our students by collectively wrapping our arms around them and giving them leadership, guidance, and direction into the future. So this is this year's T-Shirt. The front and on the back, Julissa Greer's name is on the back with Career Center and Reagan High School on 15,000 T-Shirts that are going out to students all over the triad. The framed T-Shirt there, there's actually three of those. Those are the first three shirts off the press. One is hanging at the Career Center in Mr. Underwood's classroom. One, we presented at Reagan on Friday, and that's hanging in Reagan High School. And this is the last one, and Julissa gets this one, but we have a couple more surprises for her along the way. So we just want to thank the Board, the school system, and all of the wonderful, hard-working teachers, the parents, and the students in our school system. We've been going 33 years. I think I've got 33 more left in me. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yep, yep, yep. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Fantastic.
Hello. It is my honor, I'm an eighth-grade science teacher at Jefferson Middle School. I've been teaching for 29 years, but it's not about me, it's about these kids up in front of you. The Samsung Solve for Tomorrow contest has been running for close to 13 years. I've entered it for 10 years. And this team right here won the North Carolina State Title. It's been a privilege, and this year's challenge, each year gets harder and harder. And what we do is, we try and apply science to solve a real-world problem using STEM as an approach. And what we decided to do this year was really kind of outside the box. The kids took risks, and they were well, I could say, honored. We developed a technology with the push for EV cars. One of the big problems with EV cars is that they lose power just from daily temperature differences between night and day. And these students recognized that, and then they did some research. And we found out, like, our communities have close to, we have over 250,000 cars. And if the government wants us to have electric cars 50% by the year 2030, a lot of us don't have climate-controlled garages. And so as a result, if you don't have your car plugged in, it's going to lose power. And so what these kids came up with was a way of insulating the battery with a little, with just no more than like a thermal blanket that would help alleviate that temperature difference so you wouldn't lose power. And I'm proud to say that they've won the school $12,000 of technology. So I'm going to recognize each of them. I'm looking forward to entering it next year because these students are seventh graders, so I have another year to torment them. So Luke Lanier, step forward and get your certificate. America Herrera. Ellie Pierce. Other students that were unable to attend tonight was Ender Elibus, Jay Court, and Peyton McCoy. Thank you for your time, and we thank you for being honored today. Thank you.
Congratulations. Good work. Congratulations. Good work. Good work. Good work. Congratulations. Congratulations.
who is the Director of K-12 Arts Education and Summer Enrichment.
All right, good evening, Distinguished Board, Madam Chair, Superintendent McManus, and our special guests here tonight to recognize our students that received a Silver or Gold Key in Scholastics Art. See if I can get my slide to come up here. Just, there we go. Thank you. Because you get to see it, and it's really cool. All right. So there were 27, oh, let me turn off these subtitles. All right. You can't see it, but I can, and it's blocking my script. Oh, let's see. Ah, thank you. All right. There were 27 counties represented in our Scholastics region with 3,000 total entries in this year's competition. WSFCS was awarded 70 Regional Gold Key, Silver Key, and Honorable Mention Awards. WSFCS was awarded 29 Silver Key Awards, making up 16% of those awarded in our 27-county region. WSFCS was awarded 14 Gold Key Awards, making up 11% of those awarded in our 27-county region. And so the way this will work tonight, you're going to get to see all the art, but we're going to call out the names of the students who are here with us. So, and I'll just scroll through and stop once we get to one of our students who's here. With us tonight is Dallin Butler, drawing an illustration Pear Bulb from Clemens Middle School. With us tonight also is Angel Bailey, Clemens Middle School, drawing an illustration Self-Portrait. With us tonight, Shang Shang Lee Design, welcome to Dongcheon, China, from West Forsyth High School. Also with us is Chloe Randall, Digital Art Dysmorphia from West Forsyth High School. With us tonight, Madeline Bedson, drawing an illustration Break Time from West Forsyth High School. This young lady is receiving several tonight. Tinley Douglas, starting with drawing an illustration Fish Face. We also have drawing an illustration Gunner. Drawing and illustration Lily. All these by Tinley Douglas. A drawing and illustration Soaking in Thought. And Thinker. Those were all Tinley Douglas. With us tonight is Chloe Randall, painting called Glimpse from West Forsyth High School. She's already out here. And Mr. Mabry, there might only be one if you don't see it, yep. With us tonight, Jadis Vang, painting called Fireflies Bring Dreams from West Forsyth High School. And Phoenix Vang, painting called Never Enough, West Forsyth High School. And some of these, we have a couple that won Gold Keys, and some of our Silver Key winners also received Gold Keys, so I'll go through those quickly. Grace Mazola is with us tonight, drawing an illustration Italian Wine, West Forsyth High School. Morgan McDaniel is with us tonight, drawing an illustration Fourth of July. Tinley Douglas also had several Gold Key Award-winning pieces. This one is drawing an illustration called Drowning. This one is drawing an illustration called Sour. This is a painting, it's expressive self-portrait. And the final one here is a painting called Pigeon Chest. Those were all Tinley Douglas as well. Phoenix Vang, who also received a Silver Key, received a Gold for a painting. This is called Subtle. And are there any students that showed up late that we did not get? We want to make sure that you are recognized as well. Let's give a warm round of applause to all of our students here.
Congratulations. Good work. Good work. Congratulations. Congratulations, great. Congratulations. Congratulations to you. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations, too. Congratulations. Yeah. Congratulations. [Laughter]
Just amazing. Ah, incredible art. Next, we have the Battle of the Books Winners presented by Karen Meyer, Director of Library and Media Services.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Superintendent McManus, and members of the Board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. So Battle of the Books is a Quiz Bowl-type competition sponsored by the North Carolina School Library and Media Association. Students read from a list of books and answer questions in head-to-head rounds of play, collecting points for correct titles and authors. 20 elementary schools, nine middle schools, and eight high schools participated in this year's competitions in March. These students read books from the list they loved and books that they hated, which is okay, we don't have to love everything we read. And they learned to enjoy books and genres they would have never picked up on their own. They learned to work together as a team, to have conversations about the books, and to support each other through wins and losses. Tonight, we recognize the first, second, and third-place winners from each level of the competition. So before you, right now, you have our elementary winners. Right here in third place is Pine Grove Elementary with their coach Stephanie Epperly. If you guys, Stephanie. All right, in second place, we have Meadowlark Elementary with their coaches Emily Cagle, who couldn't be here tonight, and Cheryl Bullard.
Congratulations. Congratulations to you. Good work.
In first place was Brunson Elementary with coaches Ann Dawes and Nicole Francis.
Congratulations, sir.
Brunson Elementary will compete on Friday at the Regional Elementary Battle of the Books Competition.
Good work, sir. Good work. Congratulations. Good work, sir. Good work. Good work. Congratulations. Good work, sir.
Next, we'll bring in our middle and high school winners. Maybe it's just our middle school right now, so we'll bring in our high school in just a minute. So in third place, unable to be here tonight, was Haynes Middle School with coaches David Beaumont and Heather Purvis. In second place, sorry, go ahead. In second place is Clemens Middle School with Coach Jacob Cap. In first place this year was Lewisville Middle School with Coach Emily Dockery, Ruthie Evington, and Melissa Dotson. In first place. Lewisville Middle School won the Regional Middle School Battle of the Books Competition on March 25th, and will be heading to the state competition in Fayetteville next Friday. So congratulations. [Applause] So Jacob.
Good luck, sir. Congratulations. Good luck next time. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good work. Good work. Well done. Well done. Congratulations. Well done, man. Well, well. Congratulations. Uh-huh. Congratulations. Good work. Good work. Great work. Good job, sir. That's all. That's all. Good work, sir. Good work. Good work. Thank you so much. Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Mm-hmm.
All right, now we'll bring in our high schools. High schools, come on in. Come on, are you coming? [Laughter] They're being shy. Is that everybody? All right, so for our high school, in third place was Parkland High School with Coach Kizzy Louis Phillips. Second place was Mount Taber High School, unable to be here tonight, with coaches Judy Urick, Ruth Morton, and June Ashby. And then in first place, we had Reynolds High School with Coach Joe Higgins. Reynolds High School won second place in the Regional High School Battle of the Books Competition on April 15th. Congratulations. [Applause]
Congratulations. Good work. Proud of you. Good work. Great work. Congratulations. Great work. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Good work. Thank you for your work.
Congratulations to everybody. Next are the AALAS National Award winners presented by Shannon Pilot, who is the AP Environmental Science teacher at Reagan High School and STEM Club sponsor.
Hi, I'm not Shannon. My name is Molly Romick. I'm a scientist with Charles River Laboratories, but today I'm here to, on behalf of the ALAS Foundation, sponsor of the Celebrate the Mouse Biomedical Research Video Essay Contest, which was held this past year. For those who do not know, this was a national contest where we asked students across the country to submit a five-minute or less video telling how they, a family member...
Congratulations to everybody. Next are the AALAS National Award winners presented by Shannon Pilot, who is the AP Environmental Science teacher at Reagan High School and STEM Club sponsor.
Hi, I'm not Shannon. My name is Molly Romick. I'm a scientist with Charles River Laboratories, but today I'm here to, on behalf of the ALAS Foundation, sponsor of the Celebrate the Mouse biomedical research video essay contest, which was held this past year. For those who do not know, this was a national contest where we asked students across the country to submit a five-minute or less video telling how they, a family member, a friend, a pet, have benefited from biomedical research using a mouse. I'm super excited to say that several students in the school district were winners of this contest. There are eight national awards, five of them were right here in this school district. So I live in South Carolina, and this is my time. I drive up here. I am so excited that I get to give these awards in person. It's, it's really important to me to, to really push kids in responsible science at a young age. So first, I'm happy to announce that Meadowlark Middle School student Lily Walls' video essay was selected by our judges as the first-place winner in the fifth to eighth-grade category. As first place, Lily wins $500 cash, a certificate, and a trophy.
Congratulations, Lily.
Additionally, Lily's video received the most thumbs up on the contest fifth-through-eighth grade YouTube channel, which means she won the fan favorite award as well. As fan favorite, Lily won an additional $100 cash, another trophy, and a certificate. So because Lily won first place in her school district, or for her school, her school also gets $500 in cash. So I'm happy to announce that the prize winners for the ninth-to-twelfth-grade category, Ronald Wilson Reagan High School student May Gow, video essay was selected by our judges to receive second place in the ninth-to-twelfth-grade category. May wins $250 cash, a certificate, and a trophy. Additionally, May's videos received thumbs up, the most thumbs up in the contest for the ninth-to-twelfth-grade YouTube channel, which means she won the fan favorite as well. So she wins another $100 in cash, a certificate, and a trophy. And unfortunately, she couldn't be with us this evening, so please wish May a, congratulations for her. Then next, I'm excited to announce that Ronald Wilson Reagan High School student Victoria Sabanau, video essay was selected by our judges to receive the third-place prize in the ninth-to-twelfth-grade category. As third-place winner, Victoria wins $100 in cash, a certificate, and a trophy.
So congratulations.
To Victoria. This was our sixth year of doing this contest. We are conducting another contest later again this year. We hope that more students will participate. We are so blessed in your school district. You have Shannon Pilot, who really is our, our cheerleader for responsible science and teaching our children and, and supporting our contest. So we're very excited that she's, she's part of the fold. She will receive a email to let you know that the contest is open for the next year. So congratulations to Lily, May, and Victoria. Well deserved. Very well deserved.
Next, Karen Meyer will also come back to the podium to talk about National School Library Month.
So good evening again. It is a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize the hard work and dedication of our school library media coordinators. We do have a few here with us tonight that I'm going to ask to stand and just to remain standing during the rest of my talk. Any media coordinators, look, they're all over the place. So building joyful readers is one of the core values of school library media coordinators. This school year, our libraries have circulated over a half-million books, eBooks, audiobooks, and magazines. It's a lot of reading. We are fortunate in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to have a superintendent and board that supports strong school libraries as foundational for our students' education. With that, with that said, I share this proclamation with you tonight. Whereas, school library media coordinators support the reading lives of students, teachers, families, and communities. And whereas, school library media coordinators uphold the rights of all students to ethically access and evaluate information. And whereas, school library media coordinators are leaders in their schools for literacy, digital teaching and learning, research, and inquiry. And whereas, school library media coordinators promote collaboration with administrators, teachers, students, and families. And whereas, school library media coordinators seek to develop students' critical thinking skills, empathy, innovation, and adaptability. And whereas, school library media coordinators empower students to leverage technology to construct knowledge, innovate, and creatively communicate. And whereas, school library media coordinators provide opportunities for students to connect with the global community. And whereas, school library media coordinators open windows for students to see lived experiences of others, mirrors to see themselves reflected, and sliding glass doors to step into the shoes of another through diverse books. And whereas, school library media coordinators endeavor to build continuous lifelong learners. And whereas, April 2023 has been declared School Library Month in North Carolina and across the United States. Now therefore, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board of Education hereby proclaims the month of April as the system-wide observance, observance of School Library Month. Thank you very much. And thank you.
Last, but not least, here's our board's spotlight video.
We caught up with a group of fourth and fifth-grade students at Sherwood Forest Elementary as they practiced for a musical theater performance of the classic Walt Disney film, Mary Poppins.
I really love theater, especially since you get to like sing, you get to act, you get to dance. It's, it's amazing.
Led by longtime music teacher Mary Eperson, these actors took the stage and presented Mary Poppins Jr. live on campus in the gymnasium in front of friends and family. The opportunity to simply perform in this production is not one these students take lightly.
You walk into a different world. You're in school with your friends and your teachers and schoolwork, which is typical. And then you walk in that room and you just, you feel like you're in a fantasy world. It's the most amazing feeling that you'll ever feel.
It took a lot of commitment on their part. They had to learn their lines and things at home and their songs.
It's just wonderful that we're able to provide this. It's enrichment opportunity for students and for some of the students that may not shine in other areas, they get to shine up there on the stage, and it's just wonderful to see.
WSFCS is proud to give our students ways to express their feelings and emotions. Parkland High School's Theater Arts Program accomplished that goal as they presented their annual spring show, The Elements, live in front of a packed house in the auditorium.
We cover issues that teens deal with on a daily basis.
We went along from going to teen pregnancy to teen domestic violence.
Gang violence, domestic abuse, inter-family problems, LGBTQ+. So just a bunch of different topics.
Just cover a lot of stuff that we know we can relate to.
And then when the students did monologues, you know, I, it's their stories.
So you were not feeling give up, so you were not feeling break down.
The whole message is to let you all know, let the adults know, let them know that we hear you, we know that these things are happening, and the whole point is to bring awareness that their voices are being heard. We get it, we understand.
Sixteen years ago, two miracles showed up in my life. A couple wanting children.
Twenty-six WSFCS high school students got their chance to express themselves by presenting poems they wrote in front of a big crowd at the education building. It was all part of the 2023 Poet Laureate Project presented by WSFCS and the Forsyth Educator Partnership. This event started in 2009, and it's a great way to provide students with the opportunity to express their creativity and receive positive recognition for their efforts. Congratulations to all our young aspiring poets. It's after school on a Wednesday in the media center, and Jefferson Elementary School is packed with over 150 students learning a modern art form that originated in England over 200 years ago.
The crochet club. That's what they're here for.
You know, kids nowadays, they struggle with perseverance, and they struggle with anxiety. And these are two things that I was trying to figure out a way to help them cope with when they're here at school.
The response from the students wanting to learn the craft has been incredible. The hope is that the lessons learned from the patience it takes to crochet will carry over to other parts of their school life.
They gained confidence from it, and they've learned to persevere. And so I'm hoping that they take away from that when they're sitting there doing a math problem and they can't figure it out, that they remember how to persevere. And a lot of teachers are also incorporating it in their classroom because it helps their kids calm down and helps them focus. And when, and it helps them do their work. I mean, they do stuff, and then they sit down and they get to crochet.
Oh, wow.
This is an incredible honor.
Very humbling.
Just hearing that I was one of the top-five finalists for the Core Awards just had my mind blown.
An extreme honor.
Our district is full with amazing professionals that do exceptional work every single day. And to be even in that group really, really, really is an honor.
The 30 finalists for the Sixth Annual WSFCS Core Awards visited the Cable Two Studios for Media Day. Pictures were taken and interviews were conducted for the top five in the teacher, classified employee, assistant principal, principal, certified support personnel, and Volunteer of the Year categories. The 2023 WSFCS Core Awards will be handed out on May 4th at the Benton Convention Center in downtown Winston-Salem.
Well, I just want to say I want to join the crochet club. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you have signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. Please be kind and respectful, and know that we cannot talk about sensitive or private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. First, Angela Levine.
Good evening. I am here today to talk about the agenda item that is recognizing National School Library Month as somebody who was an avid reader my entire life, still am, and a love of reading that came, you know, through my school. Public school libraries are treasures for our children. School libraries open up a world of knowledge to many students that might not otherwise get access to. Many of us take school libraries for granted, as well as the media specialists who use their expertise every day, ensuring that students have access to a wide array of books. These trained professionals spend hours researching, discussing, and ultimately choosing books to live in our school libraries. And when you are a part of the majority of the population and how you look and your lived experience, you know, it's really easy to take books for granted. You'll always find relatable stories about people similar to you. But when you are not, it becomes important to have access to books that reflect you and your lived experience. Libraries and librarians help children feel accepted and self-assured by providing books where they can see themselves. And there is a value in having books for children to learn about people who aren't like them, so they can develop empathy, understanding, and general knowledge that's going to be useful as they grow up. So, in conclusion, I encourage our district to continue to support libraries and the media specialists who oversee them, especially when they are under attack and at risk of being censored these days. We need to trust these great book experts and give parents the freedom to parent their kids as they see fit without any other parent or group of legislators choosing the books another child gets to read. We've got great experts to make those choices for us. Again, libraries are treasures, and I am glad we are honoring our public school libraries and the media specialists who work in them this month. Thanks.
Thank you. Beth Harper. Is Beth here? Okay. Alicia Salazar.
Hello, wonderful people. So I'm just here to briefly say how much I love the library system in our schools and how deeply I appreciate all the work and resources that go into them. I grew up not in the richest family in my town, and so it was very good for me to be able to go to the library at my school, pick whatever book I wanted to read, get to read it. It was just a big part of my life growing up, and I know that that is a big part of the lives of a lot of children in our district. And I just appreciate that opportunity for them. So thank you so much for the ones that are still here. Thank y'all, we value you. That's it.
Thank you. Tiffany Drew.
Good evening, Chairwoman Kaplan, Superintendent McManus, board. Tonight, we recognize National School Library Month. I would like to take this opportunity to join you in celebrating our school librarians. I spent a great deal of my childhood buried in a book. I was on the Battle of the Books team, like we saw many of the students here tonight. I can confidently say I would not be who I am without the assistance of my school librarians. As a library and information science major, we're taught how important stories are to child development. They increase a child's vocabulary and comprehension levels, they develop the imagination and creativity, they teach kids kindness and compassion. Having a diverse selection of reading materials is crucial. Our students come from a varying array of backgrounds, beliefs, races, identities, family systems, and physical and mental abilities. Every child deserves to see themselves and their family represented in the stories they're reading. Every child deserves to be the main character. Seeing characters who reflect themselves in their lives makes them feel supported and valid in their existence. It creates confidence and self-esteem, which positively affects other areas of their lives. Seeing characters who differ from them allows them to view experiences through a different lens and gain empathy for their fellow person. It teaches them that despite our many unique and beautiful differences, a common thread can always be found. So thank you, Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Librarians, for ensuring our students have a broad selection of diverse materials accessible to them. Thank you for giving them the opportunity to see themselves in stories and to see differing realities of others. Thank you for giving them the resources needed to form their own ideas and opinions. Thank you for expanding their minds and giving them permission to dream big. You are doing them a great service, and your efforts will make our community a better place.
Thank you. Beth Harper?
Yes, okay, sweet. I'm so sorry. And congratulations for going so on time. I wanted to speak on behalf of, in praise of librarians and libraries. And first to give just a short vignette, Janet Shepherd was the librarian at Brunson Elementary when my son was there, and he was not the biggest fan of school, and so I didn't always hear the best things from adults at the school about him. Oh, you're his mother. And when I met her, she said, oh, I love him! He's creative, he's imaginative, all those things. And I just loved that she had that interaction with him and saw him in that light. So that's just a small thing. And way to go, Ms. Dawes, who's the current librarian at Brunson and the E-BOB team. who's the current librarian at Brunson and the EBOB team. I also wanted to say that when I volunteer at the book fair, I am so excited to see the breadth and diversity of books on the shelves. It's really different from when I grew up, and I know how important it is for every child, like the speaker before me said, to see themselves as the hero and heroine of every book, and all the books. So, I really appreciate that. I know that librarians curate those selections, and I know that they also have to stay on top of media literacy and the digital age and all these things that with information coming so quickly at students, I know how important it is that librarians teach them how to identify reliable sources and to become, you know, informed decision-makers and good citizens. And I know how easy it is to get lost there. And so I think that's really critical. I know that they work with teachers to help with curriculum and resources. And lastly, I wanted to just share something that I found from the State of America's Libraries Report from 2019. It says, "Students in high-poverty schools are almost twice as likely to graduate when the school library is staffed with a certified school librarian." And I just thought that was really powerful. So, on that note, I will just say, I appreciate that we're celebrating libraries and school librarians today. Thanks.
Is Reverend Ford here? Okay. Alan Daniel?
Good evening, Ms. McManus, Board Chair and members of the board. I'm here tonight to ask you to please, as you consider the budget, to consider that no matter what you ever say, what your real priorities are, are where you put the money. Last year, in the summer, and I know most of you weren't on the board, the district faced a shortage of cafeteria workers over 100, shortage of bus drivers over 20, excuse me, over 80, and a shortage of teachers in the hundreds. So, one would think that since our primary priority should be the classroom education of our young people and getting them to and from school safely and getting them fed, that that would be the budget priority. However, it wasn't. We started the year with those same shortages that we ended the year with before, and no real increases in the budget for those folks. What we did instead was included in the budget $4.4 million to give raises of at least $20,000 to hundreds of employees, most of whom, or many of whom, made six digits. Now, some of those people whose salaries doubled were teachers. Now, I was a teacher one time. I know the pay scale. I know that the only way a teacher's pay doubles is if they went from half-time to full-time. The only way a teacher assistant's salary doubles is if they go from half-time to full-time. Ain't a teacher in this district got a salary increase of over $50,000. But there's some people in this building that did, or in the building down the road. Okay? Show us your priorities. It don't matter how much you pay the people at the top. I just got a text for us that came up to talk. Two more teachers are leaving. End of the year, they're done. Why? Because you all also, not you, the board, passed a code of conduct that allows students to run, the inmates are running the asylum. And that's putting it nicely.
Sir, this is not on the agenda. Code of Conduct. Thank you. Order, please. We, Childress?
Good evening. I come before you tonight to speak about the budget discussion and to encourage you to listen, and when it's appropriate, take action on the proposed increase, or compression for our classified staff. I understand the majority of our money comes from state sources, but any advantage that we can give our classified folks, we need to take. In all honesty, schools could not run with our classified folks. We have to have bus drivers to get our kids to and from school. We have to have nutrition workers to feed our students. We have to have TAs who help us teach. As an EC teacher, I couldn't do it. Last month, I stood before you with our school board and our community and introduced Carter High School's athletic programs, which I was really excited about. But what you may not know is half of the folks that were here are classified folks. And if I did not have them, we would not have athletic programs at the school. I'll conclude by saying this. For many years, I have watched, as an EC teacher, so many of our classified folks work all day, work their hearts out. And when the bell rings, they go into the bathroom, they put on their uniforms, and they slip out to their second job. I know this money may not be life-changing, but if we can give these folks a break, a night off, a week, from their second job so they can go home and see their families, we need to support this. This EC teacher wants this, and most importantly, our students deserve good classified folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update.
Thank you. So, just a few updates, starting with the first slide. Last week, we had our Special Olympians from elementary, middle, and high school competing in the Special Olympics. So, I wanted to just say it was an amazing event, and, you know, these are athletes that bring their best selves to the game, are incredible sports, have incredible sportsmanship, and it was just a great, a great day. So, thank you to all of our staff and all of the community members that were part of this incredible event. I love you guys. So, I Love You Guys was here last week and trained, I think, a couple hundred, if I'm correct in the number of staff, but in reunification process. And so, this is last summer, they trained our staff along with our law enforcement partners and other partners, emergency management partners, in a standard response protocol, which we've been using this year and has been very successful. This is the next step, which is a reunification process, and it was an incredible. So, thank you to Jonathan Wilson and his team for organizing this, and all of our folks that gave two days, I think it was two days for this, two, yep, two, two days for this training, which the instructor said they go all over the country from I Love You Guys, and they said they could tell our district was very committed to this and that this team was completely unified in supporting this process. So, hopefully we don't have to use it, but we're ready in the event we do. Next, this week, we've had a lot of celebrations this year, and so this week is no different. We are celebrating Administrative Professionals Week. So, we cannot get anything done with our administrative professionals. They know that. We know that. And so, a special shout out to them. Also, this week is filled with celebrations for all of our classified staff. Today, I was able to talk with about 250 bus drivers and lead secretaries and other folks from Transportation Office, some of our child nutrition workers. It was filled with all different roles. Some are from our maintenance staff. And so, they're coming out three days this week to different celebrations where they're getting a gift, a personalized gift, cookies, water, and in honor of them. So, it was, today was our first day, but it was a great, great opportunity just to interact for about an hour with folks and see lots of smiles and also have some good conversations with feedback on the fly, which is the best kind. So, also, two more slides, or three more slides. We have a couple of upcoming board and staff workshops I wanted to remind you of. Tuesday, May 2nd is our next one, and that will be on talent. And you will actually get accurate numbers around our vacancies and talent. And also, we'll be understanding more about all of our hiring events. We just had one today that was 20, we had 23 people applying for driver vacancies. And then also, a facilities workshop, one second, because that one's important, really important, too. On Tuesday, May 2nd, 1:30, we will be doing our facilities workshop, which will actually be around the audit. So, we will have the company that has done the audit over the last year presenting the findings of that audit, the board then having conversations around prioritizing next steps with our rubric that we'll be using to make decisions moving forward. Also, our partnership with Forsyth Tech Community College, next steps, April 27th, we have a staff meeting with both teams to bring the MOA back for changes so that we can make sure that we are clear moving forward on all expectations for our high schoolers that are sitting on a college campus and what is acceptable and not acceptable. We will bring an MOA back to the board on May 23rd, and that will be a revised MOA that our board will need to approve. So, we will bring, again, it's going to be very detailed about what the expectations are and what is okay, although our students are on a college campus, what is okay for them and not okay for them. So, that's one other update. And last but not least, a safety and security workshop follow-up. So, our safety and security workshop last week actually had about all the minutes up until the last 10 that were extremely productive. And I wanted to follow up because the conversations in that 90 minutes with our law enforcement partners led to some really good outcomes, and I wanted to remind our board of those. One of those was looking at a district protocol for handling the return of students or what that would look like following some type of incident on the weekend in the neighborhood. And what we realized in that conversation is, we were not on the same page with what does that protocol look like? How do we make sure that someone that could potentially have committed a violent crime not come be walking back in the doors on Monday, but that we have some type of process in place to make sure that our students at school are safe and that student gets extra support that is needed? And that would be, could be in another location. So, there's just coming to actually a consensus around what that protocol will look like. We had lots of conversations about their real-time crime center, and that was both at the police department and the sheriff's office. And so, we will be planning some field trips with you all, as they offered, to go see their real-time crime centers, but also learn, they talked about their FUSEs camera system and how they can talk to each other. Our camera system doesn't always talk as fast to them. And so, we will take some trips over there to see how we can work even more productively in that area. Planning regular meetings, Jonathan and his team meet regularly, but I think it was stated, you know, a monthly meeting, something that's more formulated, like where it's, this is going to happen every month at this time, so we can continue to grow our partnership. And then also, planning another joint meeting of our partners so we can continue the conversations around just community and school safety. So, that's an update on that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, point of privilege.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Board Member Wood?
It's, that's great news to hear, especially, we're grateful, Madam Superintendent, for the updates on the SRO, and those are critical components of what we do as a school system. I'm especially glad to see and to hear that the MOA, our relationship with the early college and middle college with, that's on the campus, conducted on the campus of Forsyth Technical Community College, I'm glad to see that that will be on our agenda on the May 23rd board meeting. And I learned today, and some folks might be glad to hear this, I am told today by our legal counsel, and Dionne, you may want to, if you want to respond further, that'd be fine, but I'm told as of today, it is, it is our understanding, it is my understanding from our legal counsel, that this is still a matter today that is under criminal investigation. So, we are limited. So, we are limited as to, to some extent, as to what we can say, but let me, may I say this, Madam Chair and Superintendent McManus, that some, some may have misconstrued, and I say misconstrued carefully, our board silence as assent or consent to the events of March 22, 2023. Please let us disabuse anyone here in this meeting or in other locations and watching this, that that is not the case. This board, this board wants our parents, our students, our staff, our employees, the taxpayers, the voters, all of our, all stakeholders in this great academy that we have as the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System, to understand that this board, under state law, does not possess prosecutorial powers or arrest powers or subpoena powers. We must trust our duly-elected law enforcement entities and partners to enforce the state laws. So, I hope everyone completely understands that. And let me reiterate that as of today, it is our understanding that this is still a matter under criminal investigation. This is great news, and we affirm that, again, as the superintendent has said, that a revised MOA with the Forsyth Technical Community College will be placed on our May 23rd board meeting agenda for discussion and action. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Wood. Ms. Jenkins, do you want to comment?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm, yes, as of today, it was our understanding that the matter was still open. However, I believe they're probably in the process of closing it out. I'm still waiting on confirmation of that matter. So, I'll make sure to update the board of that.
Thank you. Our next order of business is discussion items. Tommy Krantz, Chief Financial Officer, will lead us on the discussion of the upcoming budget.
Good morning, good, not good morning. I am so sorry. Good evening, again, board members. I'm going to start us off and then turn it over to our CFO, Mr. Krantz, to go into some of the charts that you got. Last, two weeks ago when we were here, you received some high-level information plus a budget book that was captured a little bit more detail. Upon the request of the board, you asked for more detail, and so that is what we have provided. I know we've posted that detail online also publicly, I think, Saturday morning. But basically, what we're going to do, what Tommy and I are going to do is share some of that detail with you. Tommy has created many charts, him and his team, to actually make sure that you all understand what the money, how our money is being spent, and what our new request is going to look like pending board approval in two more weeks. So, with that said, our vision and mission are actually the foundation of what we have included in the budget proposal. You can see that, and we, that's what we ground all of our decision-making in. Also, our five goals of our strategic plan, you're going to see, are highlighted throughout all components of the budget. If you look at that, obviously, tonight's really around our local dollars, but you can see throughout the document what is also spent on federal and state. But tonight, for the sake of you all and taking this to the county commission, we are really highlighting our local dollars, the use of our local dollars. If you would look, because I know there's a lot about, there's been a lot of conversation about our classified employees, there is a line item specifically for that, and Tommy will talk more about that. And we'll get to there in just a minute. The last thing I wanted to talk about are budget, our priorities. So, within these five goals, I'm going to go back, within these five goals, there are three priorities that we are focused on as a school system. Learning, obviously, which is instruction and learning, that's what takes place in the classroom, and that is around core instruction. It's around opportunities for students that have an IEP, that are getting services through our exceptional education programs. It's students that are receiving services through our multi-language learner programs. It's interventions, tutoring, it's core curriculum. All of that takes place in that instruction bucket. And what you're going to see is, there are items within the budget that focus on instruction, but after you talk about personnel costs, it is, it's, a lot of the money is not coming from local for those. But there are dollars that you will see broken down that do support instruction from the local dollar. Next would be culture. That is where you will see supports around counseling and mental health supports, behavioral health supports, anything related to safety, positive learning environments. You will see a line item this evening that goes up in support of our partnerships with our law enforcement partners, because those costs have gone up as well. You'll see that. because those costs have gone up as well, you'll see that. And then this also is the area for mentoring and extracurricular learning opportunities for students. So all of that is captured in that. And then last but not least is in talent. And that is the recruitment, retention, compensation, the development, engagement, and wellness of our employees. And you will see that within the budget dollars as well. What you don't see when we talk about line item, someone might think, well, am I going to see the line item specifically for, you know, 20 of something? Or you're not, we're not going to get to that level in the budget, but you will see with the handouts that were given and were posted online, you can see down to how much is spent out of local for instructional supplies, for supports to our students that are receiving EC supports. You'll see it broken down like that for counseling services and all of those, broken down in detail. So hopefully, this is more aligned with what you were looking for at this point. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tommy, and I'll stay by at the question and answer part.
Thank you, Ms. McManus. So the 2122, we start off with, because that's the last full fiscal year, to give you the best understanding of how the dollars are spent from the local fund. As you're thinking of the funds, there are six major funds that the district operates out of. One would be child nutrition, two would be capital, three would be what's called fund aid or other, federal, state, and local. At the end of the day, when you're looking at what dollars are available for you to manage in a manner that you can pretty much go without, in a very general sense, it really gets down to being your local funds. The state funds are divided up into what they call purpose reporting codes, there's 90 of them, and that dictates how we account and utilize those particular funds. In the federal, you've got two main buckets. You've got, it's traditional federal programs being Title I, Title II, and then the ESER funds. ESER funds, as you may recall, will expire on June 30th of 2024. So we will conclude this year, one more year after this, and then ESER is completed. And then, on the state, on the local side, you have the greatest benefit. As noted, when you look at local funds in 2122, it was a $145 million budget. Of that $145 million, $110 million was spent on salaries and wages. That's where the bulk of the dollars, even if you peel back in the federal and in the state, that's where the bulk of the dollars are spent inside this district. Now, some of you that I saw last week, and if you don't have it, we gave out attached to this, a schedule that showed the expenses by function, we call it. That also gives you a much broader breakdown of the expense numbers from just salaries and benefits, okay? And if you don't have that, please just ask and we'll tell you. The next thing on the charter schools, that passes through the local funds. That's about a $10 million distribution. It stayed at this 9.6 million is what it showed. Last year, we expected to go up this year to about $10.1 million. Next would be your local fund utilities, and as you can tell, this is a breakdown between electric, natural gas, and other property services. A slice of it is $9.7 million of the $145 million. Next area is the maintenance costs. This is an area that you see in your capital funds, where both in the two-thirds bonds and in the normal capital allocation that the county traditionally gives to the school system, there's a line in there, not only for capital, but also for maintenance and repair. That's something that, in all honesty, we probably are underfunded as a district, but that's true in most school districts. As a general rule, if you look at the Council for Great City Schools, if you want to maintain a building for 50 years, you should invest 2% of the fair market value of replacing that building today, each and every year. Now, that does include your debt service payment, but that's kind of gives you a barometer of where we're spending based on the square footage that we have inside this district. The local custodial cost, this one you can see is $8.7 million. That number, we do anticipate an increase coming up this year, as you'll see in the request. That's needed because the services have been raised and the industry standards at a medium level. In order to do that, we have to pay a little bit more money for those services from the third-party firm. Next, you see our transportation costs. Transportation will look low to you because the majority of transportation is funded out of the state. Many of our departments are funded in multiple places. They may get federal, they may get state, and they may actually get local funds. So it becomes a challenge for our staff to understand where their funding comes from and how we manage that. Last is your other bucket. And the other bucket out of your budget, when you look at the budget in 2122, was almost $950 million. Now, that includes your capital outlay and everything else. Of that, you only had $19 million to really divide up, because you think about it. Utilities you're going to have if you want to keep the buildings open. Transportation you're going to have if you want to keep buses and bringing students to school, which you do. So there's a certain part of the local budget that's almost fixed. You have it when the buildings are open. You really get down to a limited dollar that's available, okay? And unfortunately, the bulk of our dollars are spent on people. I say that's unfortunately because they're the ones you need to get the jobs done, but at the same time, how do you reshuffle the debt to free up dollars to do reading programs? Or whatever, whatever the needs are, you're limited in where you're going to go to try to get those funds. Because at the end of the day, our budgeted, budget revenues must equal expenses. There can't be a difference. We can have less expenses than the actual revenues and put that in fund balance, but we can't spend money we don't have. And so we have, this is the only real place you have available to do that. Now, this is the schedule we do, and let's go through it real quick. The raises right now, the state budget is still in discussion. The governors proposed a 10% raise, that was our first go-around. In year one, in year two, a 6% raise. Remember, this is a biennium year, so they'll do a two-year budget. The House came out with their budget, and they said they were going to do two fives, is what they're proposing. The Senate, I've heard anywhere from 7.5% for two years to maybe a 4 and a 3. There's different combinations out there, nothing official has come down. So the point is, is that the numbers you see up there are an estimate. They're at 5%, but if the state does a budget of, say, 7 and 8, we would be coming back with a 7% raise, and then we're not worrying right now about the, you know, about the second year of the budget process. We saw an increase in the retirement. Many districts went to numbers that we were initially, we thought we would stay at what the House had, which they went from 24.5 to 24.62. But most districts all think it's going to go higher than that. So we went back to our original plan of 24, 25.25, a 0.75 increase. On FICA, there's no increase, that's the increase for the additional salary dollars. That's seven, we pay 7.65% for every dollar we pay out. The workers' comp, that's the increase on the additional salary. Our workers' comp is very low, but it is, it is a percentage of the salaries. The health insurance, they're going up. Most of us are all about saying it's going to be around $300, and that's what we did, the same thing, kind of consistent with other districts in the state. That actual amount will be determined during actually the budget process, and we'll see, that'll be corrected or trued up once the budget gets adopted. On the, so that gave us, for the 5% raise, a $9.2 million request. Okay? We started out the budget at $156.7 million. That was the 155, which was your actual resolution, plus the fines and forfeitures, it always comes in, and that's 1.6 million. And that equals your $156 million. Okay? So if we keep everything as it is today, there's a balanced budget today, there's no free money out there. If we keep everything equal, we need more money just to do the raises, and that's 9.25 million. On the salary compression for the classified staff, that was on last year's schedule, the county elected not to fund that particular item. This year, we thought it was important to bring it back. This has been a goal of Ms. McManus since I've been here, and I know before I got here. It is not a simple process, as we've talked about with the different people and the different pay grades and how compression occurs when you do a part of a group, and then you leave this other part alone, and you have the best intents to come behind it and true it up, but it becomes more difficult. So this would be a plan to really, really get this thing trued up as best we can and continue to work to get this thing fixed sooner rather than later. Instead of keep talking about it, let's execute. And, and Ms. McManus and I have, I think, got a solid plan. This is, this is a solid, solid step in that direction. It won't be 100% complete, but we'll, we'll be heading in that direction. And I think if, if we can do this, that getting to the finish line is very doable, whereas today, it may look like it's very far. I think it becomes much more reality, not that today's fantasy, I don't want that to be said, but I think it becomes much more of a chance of occurring. Okay? On the custodial, we talked about, there is an increase, we're projecting out a $2 million increase. On the SROs, the county has, has presented us with an increase of about, it is $600,000. And then Kernersville was $60,000, so that's where the $660,000 number comes from. So when you look at that, so 156 is fixed. You add up the salaries, the classified, the custodial, and the SROs, the ask that we're asking the county is $16.3 million. Last year, we asked about $14 million, we received a little bit less than 7. So any questions on that schedule?
Yes, so what, what did we ask for last year, Tommy, besides the compression adjustment that we did not get? If you can recall.
We had the pay increase. Oh, we had an increase in the maintenance costs to address inflation and growth. We had an increase in utility costs. And there's one more item. There's one more item in that category, I can't think of. There's one other item, and I apologize.
It's okay, if you think about it, just let me know, it's okay.
Oh, that's not a problem.
So the 25%, the, I think you said it was 0.75% of an increase for the retirement?
Retirement, yes, sir.
Is that, that's our employer contribution, that's the percentage we have to contribute?
That is correct.
And so we, if there's an increase in pay for employees that are on local funds, we are obligated to increase that. We, if we don't have the money, what happens if?
Anybody who's an employee of the school system and qualifies under the retirement program, we're required by statute to pay it.
Right, and so if we aren't allocated the funds from the county to account for that, we have to find it elsewhere?
At the end of the day, yes, sir. But you also, if I'm under the federal side, we would want to allocate, we would want to, you know, and you saw where I broke down the raise by the number of employees that are in, under the state-funded and the number of employees under federal. So each one of those, we'd be paying their respective fair shares on the retirement.
Okay, and then my last question is about the SRO increase. Did you say the county, the county requested that increase?
Yes, sir, my talking with Jonathan Wilson and his, my understanding and what he requested, they presented us with an increase of $600,000 a year.
Okay, all right, the sheriff's department?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
And then Kernersville was $60,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Before we transition, and I know it's not showing because it's not a request, but last week I wanted to remind everyone that, or two weeks ago, that Tommy talked about the 1.3 that we have actually, it was in the last presentation two weeks ago, that we actually freed up by not replacing certain positions, merging different things together, so eliminating probably some positions from central office, 13 total, that was another 1.3 to classified. So when we get, if we get that 4.437, we'll add the 1.3 to that, and that'll be our starting, so about 6 million to address some of the classified positions as well. And that's just the start, we're continuing to do the, the, just the strategic planning around positions and future positions. So this is just for this one school year, going into next school year, but it's something we are very committed to, and we'll continue looking to free up dollars in other places.
Yes, sir.
Tommy, I have one question on the custodial cost.
Yes, sir.
Just a general percentage, what percentage of custodial cost is third-party and what is done in-house?
About between around 85, 80 to 85% is going to be third-party.
Third-party.
There's approximately, I think there's 48 schools, third-party, and then the rest are us. We do in-house, something around that number. And I know Lauren and her team is working diligently to just raise the quality of the care. And I know that they are managing the third-party extremely hard to ensure that they deliver the services they're supposed to. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank Tommy. What a lot of folks don't realize is how much time he spends with us in small groups, walking us through things, answering questions, getting us additional information. So while we may not be asking tons of questions up here, we have been sitting in lots of sessions with him, grilling him, and I just wanted to give him some acknowledgement for how much time he has been spending with us behind the scenes.
Well, thank you, it's a pleasure. So your next steps, one would be May 9th. We would come to y'all, address any questions, make any presentations that y'all deem necessary. I would ask, and I think Ms. McManus agrees, I know she does, that y'all would vote on the superintendent's recommended request. That way, we could present it to the county commission on May 11th. Hopefully, everybody from the county, as well as the state, approve their budget. And, and please keep an eye on the federal government side. If the debt ceiling becomes an issue, that possibly, we just have to keep our eyes on how that may impact title dollars that we get later on. And then in June, we get the budgets approved and we get it all rolling out. Okay, well, thank y'all very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next order of business is action items. First, consider approval of the elementary school camera addition grant project. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion that was made by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the student Chromebook refresh annual purchase. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Brown Gather. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the schematic approval for East Forsyth High School. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Coon, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, that, thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the construction manager at risk selection for East Forsyth High School renovation. Do I have a motion?
So, so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Coon, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of policy 6161.2, internet safety policy. Do I have a motion?
I'm sorry, was that?
I'm sorry, was that Board Member Wood?
Okay, thank you, Board Member Wood. Okay, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question about it. It defined a minor as anybody under the age of 17, and I think of a minor as anybody under the age of 18, and just think that all, you know, that our 17-year-olds should be protected under this policy. The internet safety one.
May I respond to that? So I have with Kevin Sherrill, who led the discussion policy committee on this policy, and the revisions are based on CIPA, which is the Children's Internet Protection Act, and we adopted their definition of minor based on the federal regulation to make it consistent.
Okay, so what does that mean for our 17-year-olds? Are they not protected under this?
No, we still have district-level protections for all students.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of policy 3330, Contract Administration. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion from Board Member Coon, a second from Board Member Miller. Is there any discussion?
Yes, so, Deion, just the approved, the proposed contract includes the revisions to the language to make it consistent, the pronouns? Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Our next order of business is Consent Agenda Items. First, consider approval of the General Personnel Report, and second, consider approval of the March 14, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to consider approval of both Consent Agenda Items?
So move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Vice Chair Bohannon, a second from Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Our next order of business is Announcements. Tuesday, May 10, 2023, will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education, and before we begin this section of our meeting, in which anyone can comment on almost anything, let me say to our Cable 2 viewers, thank you for watching, this will conclude our broadcast.
Thank you for joining us on Your School Channel, Cable 2.